2024, 6:01 PM. Invocation will be given by Pastor Brandon Pugh of First United Pentecostal Church, led by the Pledge of Allegiance of Texas Pledge by Councilmember Haney. Pastor, anybody wishing to join us for a moment or prepare can do so voluntarily and stand up. Pastor, church is yours.
I want to thank you for today. Thank you for this great leadership of Odessa, our city manager, our mayor, our city councilman, our city councilor. Lord, I thank you for all our first responders, our firemen and our police officers. Lord, I thank you for all the hard work and the sacrifice that they do for us. I pray that you continually bless them and may you just give each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in our city. Lord, give them wisdom so that they would solve the problems, that they would think right about right and feel wrong about wrong, that they would continue to establish order and stability and prosperity in our community. In your name we pray, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Seeing we have no proclamation, presentations and awards, any citizen wishing to make comments on an agenda items can do so by filling out a comment card and posting only your full name. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the consideration of said item. I'll ask the council to review the consent agendas presented and entertain a motion to accept, deny or amend.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second by Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against indicating by the same sign, motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to the regular agenda, item seven, consider payment on one bodily injury settlement claim of 50K or more claiming injuries arising from actions at our fault driver. Ms. Griffin. So we get to do a duel.
Give us and you take away.
So yes, I'm before you.
Is it on?
This is better. Thank you, sorry. I'm before you to request approval for approval of a couple negotiated settlements for two automobile accidents in which our employees were at fault. The first happened in March 2023. Our solid waste driver failed to yield it right away and struck a vehicle. And we already paid for the claimant's vehicle. What we currently owe is the liability piece of that claim. The request was 125,000 and we settled for 85,000. The second one involved a police officer, our police officer in February 2022.
Stay on one. So we're going to. We're going to.
Yeah, we're going to need to take action. And you just, are you talking to, this is the 85,000?
Yes.
Okay, so numbers, if you will do number seven, that's the $50,000 claim.
Yep.
Okay, do number seven.
That's the one wrong, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Do number seven, 50,000, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So number seven is the accident that occurred with one of our police officers in February 2022. The officer made an unsafe U-turn and struck another vehicle. We have already paid for the cost, the total loss of the citizen's truck. And what's currently owed now is the $50,000 settlement that we agreed to negotiate it. The request was 250,000, so we negotiated down to 50.
And this one went to mediation, I believe.
It did go to mediation, thank you. Yeah, it did go to mediation that I spent half a day negotiating that down.
Okay, and so mayor, now I just need you to take action on this, to pay this out.
Any questions, council, discussion? So I will entertain a motion for item seven, consider payment of one bodily injury settlement claim for 50,000.
Submove.
I have a motion by Councilmember Haney. Councilmember Cornell, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same sign, motion passed unanimously. Item eight, consider payment of one bodily injury settlement claim of 85,000 for more than claimant of injuries arising from actions of our fault driver.
Thank you so much. So it's, it was a solid waste driver that failed to yield it right away and hit a citizen's vehicle. And we have already paid the cost, the total loss of the car and negotiated through our adjuster to get the claim down to 85,000 for 125.
Council, any discussion? Now entertain a motion. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez. Second by Councilmember Thompson for a payment of bodily injury settlement of 85,000. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same sign, motion passed unanimously.
And mayor, just a quick note, usually we would do these in executive session, but it's like I told you that these are, so we're at fault, the city's at fault, our people are at fault, so there was no need of going to executive session to discuss these, we just, we need to do the right thing, just pay them.
I agree.
So that's what we've done.
And I like the transparency, is what we should be doing.
That's, yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you for spending that half a day mediation, it is amicable and workable, thank you.
Yes, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item nine, public hearing, open to public hearing to consider approving Windmill Crossing Public Improvement District Operations Maintenance Service and Assessment Plan. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, council, as you can tell, Mary Petty is not here with us tonight, and neither is Zach Little. Zach's flight got held up, so, from weather in the metroplex, so we're going to get through this very simply and easily.
Okay.
Okay? So basically, this is the next step in the PID process, and this is the levy. This is tonight, you're going to levy the assessment, okay? Now Beaton Bow is here, one of the representative, I think Mr. Williams is here somewhere, there he is, and Beaton Bow has consented to this. And this is going to be, this PID is going to be collected, the money's going to be collected just like you would property taxes every year. It'll come through ECAD and everything, it's same thing, same process, okay? And so what this will do is the money will be put away for maintenance of the parks, the mowing and upkeep and all of that for the parks, okay? The Public Improvement District, okay? So now this will all be based on a budget, so this year it's not too much, but next year as the homes are there, it'll grow, and then it'll continue to grow year after year, okay? So what we need to do now, mayor, is if you will, would open a public hearing to consider approving the assessment.
Okay. Council, any questions, any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Where does the 45,000 come from?
It is coming from Beaton Bow.
From Beaton Bow, okay.
Now, there's no houses, yeah. No, no, and understand now, this is, like, if I want to go out there to Windmill Crossing and buy myself, my wife and I go out and buy a piece of property, they will give us a notice and they will say, okay.
Right.
Y'all are going to have to pay X amount every year, just like property taxes, it will be above beyond our property taxes, okay? So this is no cost to the city. This is basically going to be a public park that is created by Beaton Bow and the homeowners out there because of the extra taxes that they'll pay for the PID. But, but so far, Beaton Bow has put up the money and everything, that's where all the money's coming from.
That's the seed money, okay.
No, no city money.
No, but the seed money.
That's it, yes sir, it is, seed money.
Any other further questions? If not, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing, I will now open the public hearing. Yes, I'm sorry.
So the people that move in out here are not going to be able to block these parks from anybody just coming, are they not?
Nope. They're going to be public for everybody. Yes. It's, we have it in one of the agreements that we have, and that they will actually, you know, once it's done, like, if I want to come from the south side and go up there and walk, walk around, I can do that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Any other further questions, discussion?
Dan, just recognition, this is for the city of Odessa is our first.
This is our first.
First PID.
Yes, it is.
Second will be as you.
Oh, it will be, yes, yes, it will be, but, but you know, this, this is the way of these, these, and Mr. Williams can come up here and speak to this, this is the way these, like Dale Horton, Beaton Bow, this is the way of the future.
Yes.
Because, you know, it's no longer taxpayer money, you know, it's not someone on the east side having to foot this bill for someone on the west side. It is, it's folks right there on the west side that are going to foot it themselves.
It's improving the quality of life also.
Yes, it is.
Just state your name for the record.
Yes, yes sir, Ronnie Wallace with Beaton Bow Homes.
Mr. Wallace, sorry.
And I think I'm, that's okay.
I, yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
Williams Wallace.
But no, we, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, really want to thank the mayor and council. It has, as y'all have mentioned, it's been a process, it's the first PID, and it's really taken a lot of cooperation and teamwork for something brand new, but we feel it's a great mechanism, you know, for the homeowners out there, but also the entire city. And there are no restrictions, the, the people who live in Windmill Crossing will pay for the PID, as Dan mentioned, but we don't really have any problems with the PIDs we have in Lubbock, you know, people that live in adjacent communities may, you know, they're more than welcome to walk through there. And my shoes are a little dirty because I was out at Windmill earlier, and so we're actually beginning to get some dirt work going, so the parks are beginning to take shape, so I think everybody's going to be really happy with it. And then just the last thing, just to clarify, the 45,000, that would be the, for this first year, the first two phases, and it's kind of buried in the paperwork here, but we have all the lots listed in what we call Phase One, I don't have the exact total, somewhere over 100 lots, so all the lots in Phase One and all the lots in Phase Two. So each lot will be assessed $450 annually divided by 12 months. So we feel it's a reasonable, you know, amount to pay every month to get some really top-notch maintenance that will, will last long-term. So we're excited about it, and again, appreciate the time and, and all the hard work behind this.
Appreciate you, it's a learning process for all of those students.
You bet, you bet, absolutely.
And Mr. Wallace, this is something that everybody that comes and buys a home there, you'll give them full notice, like we discussed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They'll know, this is what I'm in for.
Yes, yes, and Mary Petty, their team, they work with PIDs throughout the state of Texas, so they're very used to that. And we, as a company, we put a system in place when our buyers come in with all our sales team members to, as we go through everything, that's, that's an item we, we definitely note and kind of stop, and, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of things when you're buying a home, you know, laying out everything, but that is critically important, and we have a training program to make sure that we don't minimize that and definitely point that out with everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other further questions and discussion?
Just to open the, open the public.
Trying to get there.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing, I will now open the public hearing portion, anyone wishing to address item nine as presented can do so by coming forward and stating your full name and only your full name. You can do so by coming forward now. So at this point, just start playing the Jeopardy song in your head. There you go, thank you. So seeing that no one sprinted towards the podium, I will now close the public portion of this hearing on item nine, and if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion for approval on item nine as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner. Second by Councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against indicating by saying aye. Motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to item 10, ordinances, consider the sale and conveyance of the old fire station number six to Megan Prado and Andrew Prado of the Town and Country Drug. This is our first reading.
Mayor, council, this is, as you know, this is a municipal building site, which of course, state law says that it must be conveyed by ordinance, and so this is our first reading of that ordinance to actually convey the property. And Mr. Harriage is here, and once we do this reading, and then two weeks from now we'll do the second reading, then he will be able to close, and then we will be able to, we'll actually get the money at some point, a couple, three weeks.
All right. Sounds good. Council, any discussion? Now entertain a motion for item 10.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same sign, motion passed unanimously. Going to move on to item 11, consider revision of the ordinance, section 13 dash four dash 12, charges for collection and disposal, first approval. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening, sir.
This is, just asking the council to consider revision, an update on the ordinance, section 13 dash four dash 12, charges for collection and disposal. First one will be to consider an $8 recurring fee for a homeowner to, when they request an additional cart, a limit of two per household, a total of three with the one that the city issues, and then the two if they request it. The $8 fee will be added to their monthly charge already of 2318, plus the additional $8 recurring, so, for one container, or one cart. Also asking the council to recommend or consider, and adding some language, to chapter, section A of the Texas Administrative Code titled 30, chapter 330, subchapter C of TCEQ, stating Odessa, City of Odessa complies with collecting trash once, once a week at a minimum. We will go back to twice a week service, but this is just to state that the TCEQ, we are in compliance with TCEQ if, when we're going once a week. Also add language on section C of the light commercial, section E of nonprofit religious buildings, section F, attempted service on rollout carts, this is just added language on the, on the code, on the ordinance. Also consider removing language from the, from the ordinance in section, chapter one, section D, no more share counts that have four-yard containers, if that's commercial or, or non-city, or non-residential accounts. Also remove language from chapter two, section D and E, no more share accounts of a three-yard or four-yard container of a county or outside city limits accounts. And that's it. Solid waste, I wouldn't see any questions.
So what about, what about section F?
Section F, attempted service on rollout carts?
Yeah. Extra service temporary?
Right, temporary service, if a rollout cart, our customer calls and the cart wasn't, wasn't set out, if we have to go back, there's going to be additional charge to it, which, which is already implemented in the, in the ordinance.
And then you're taking out special service events?
Yes.
So we're not doing that anymore?
No, we are doing this, especially, yeah, there'll be additional charge for that.
Additional charge, okay.
And there'll be a minimum charge of 2055 for nonprofit or religious buildings, minimum charge.
Council, any questions, any discussion?
You said something about dumpsters, what were you going to do with the one, the two, three yard dumpsters, what, what did you say?
Right, on, on the share counts, if you, if you reside in the county as a commercial account.
Yeah.
We would, city will no longer be sharing accounts, in other words, you can't share with a business out there in the county, you'll have to get your own or pay for your own dumpster.
Okay.
Doesn't mean they can't go out there and dump them.
Right.
Mr. Rodriguez, let me ask you this. So in residential areas where we have the metal containers or metal dumpsters?
Yes, sir.
Once it's on my property, for example, but there's three homes that use it, and then there's one further down the alley that three homes use that one. As a city resident, my property's being charged X number of dollars for, for that dumpster, but the same amount for the other two?
Correct, it's totally 318 for each residential, so it's one, one container for every four houses, they usually have averages out, or one for three, but everyone is, is being charged 20 to 18 for, for trash collection. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's for a rollout cart or a metal dumpster.
That's, that's the cost of operation for pickup per household, we divide it by the other, by the households.
No problem, so, you bet.
Any other further discussion, questions? Now, I will entertain a motion for item 11.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Cornell.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez, revising the ordinance of section 13 dash four dash 12 for charges, collection, disposal, all those in favor indicating by the, by the, by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by same sign, motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Excuse me, mayor, I apologize, I need to back out of this, this deal right here.
Abstention.
Abstention, yes.
We have.
And I apologize to y'all.
No, we have a five, five and one abstention. On 11. We're going to move to item 12, consider amending the current code for storm water department to reflect the proper supervisory department. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, mayor and council, so this is a request to be able to formally move storm water into the development department, it's been under development for the past six years, and we just want to correct the ordinance and where it removes the word of, that it goes to public works, instead it would go to development.
Okay. Is it part of the, trying to reorganize, of the chart? Council, do we have any questions?
So I guess that, what you're doing is just putting it under, under development so that when you're getting ready to do a project that.
Correct, and it's already been under development for the past five years.
Oh, has it?
Yes, so it should, or six years, sorry.
You're doing housekeeping on the ordinance.
Yes.
Good, okay.
So nobody else can use the funds for, that it's not a fund.
You take the physical action, but there's no follow-through in the language.
I got it.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Now entertain a motion for item 12 as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson. Second by.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell, all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by the same sign, motion passed unanimously. We're going to move on to item 13, consider amending the social host accountability ordinance, section eight dash one dash 27, create section eight dash one twenty-eight, fentanyl crisis in the city of Odessa. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, council, first let me thank Councilman Haney for bringing this to our attention, and then thank Councilman Cornell and Councilwoman Swanner for using the fentanyl committee, opioid committee to actually put this into place, but this is something that Councilman Haney brought to us here several months ago, and it's something that we have reached that is very doable. So what we're going to do is, if you approve it, is the social host accountability ordinance, we're basically going to add not only alcohol is what's in there now, but we will also add fentanyl, opioids, you know, if they're giving them out, and of course, Councilwoman Swanner, Councilman Haney, Councilman Cornell may want to chime in, but that's essentially what we're doing, and we're creating a new portion of the ordinance, eight one twenty-eight, to deal with the fentanyl crisis, of course, it's going to be overlapping each other, but in the social host ordinance as well as creating the new, but that's what we're doing.
Council, any discussion, open the desk for open discussion.
I'll go ahead and go first, and Councilman Haney did bring an ordinance to the committee for us to look at, the committee looked at it last week, and we thought this is the perfect time because graduation is upon us, and we enforce the alcohol, so we also should be enforcing the drug problem here as well.
So, Councilwoman, do y'all know, this committee, you know how many fentanyl deaths we've had in the last six, eight months, or did y'all get those numbers?
Chief Gurke and Matt Davidson and maybe Chief Cotton actually had those numbers. We are seeing a reduction in some of the calls, I'm not sure why, I mean, it has gotten better.
I don't have those numbers, I mean, I gave them to you this evening.
Yeah, just email them, yeah, that's, just email them.
I was just curious if it was getting worse or not, you know?
No, it seems to actually, the numbers have seemed to.
Took a while.
Yeah.
Education, awareness.
Yeah, I think it's very, you know, it's very well needed, you hear horror stories all the time, so.
So decorating candy up to look like, I mean decorating up fentanyl to look like candy should be very much on everyone's minds during this part of the season. It's a, it's a party drug for everybody, so I, for me, this hits hard, I've seen seven women standing up here, pouring their hearts out for their kids, one more, we don't need any more, none at all, and so the harder we make it, and, and the consequences for all of this stuff need to be harsh, they don't need to be gentle. This is, this is wrong, to take something that's so silent, and, and I, my heart just bleeds for, for anyone that's had problems with this, and this drug is still being shipped constantly across the border, we're right here close to the border, guys, we are a stopping point for all kinds of stuff, and fentanyl's not, fentanyl needs to be stopped anywhere it, it, it comes, and if we want to keep our city going in the right direction and keep everything going, then I say step up and make the ordinance for a lot of years on anybody that is doing this, this is a dangerous drug, this is not, this is not something that you roll up in a joint and smoke, but unfortunately, they're doing that with this too, so, guys, this is, this is just bad news, and it was on my heart that whole night, I mean, God was just laying it on my heart that, that we need to do something for any drug, but this one especially, there's just too many deaths, and there's probably been deaths that were not even attributed to this, that should have been attributed to this, so. I was more than glad to do that that night, I, I just started looking and started seeing what other cities were doing, and I wanted to make sure that we stepped up to our place right here, and that we make this hard on anybody that wants to commit to doing this, but especially for our kids, because if I'm not mistaken, this is a touched drug, and if some of our kids touch this drug, it's in their system. So guys, candy is, if somebody's doing that, I mean, I, I just assume that's, and if kid's getting sick from that, I assume just charge them with attempted murder, because that's exactly what that is, no matter how you look at it, so. That's it.
Just reading some of the, just going through some of your legal definitions, stupefaction? What is that?
Oh.
That is in, this is in the red, this is in section two, general provisions, eight dash one, item.
Section two, eight dash one, let's see which one?
It is, now I lost it, oh, item, item B. It's just a word, that is page three of five.
Oh.
This is where you have condition of intoxication, stupefaction, giddiness paralysis, stupefaction?
That's taking gideon somehow.
Okay.
That's too big of a word for me.
Yeah, okay.
Part of this ordinance is taken from the, the state law.
Yeah, yeah, we borrowed it from state law. All right, well, it seems to even cover the legal portions of it, so it's good, it's good.
That's maybe being in a stupor or some kind of stupefaction.
I'd, I've never seen that word, I thought it was one of those lick the, lick the, lick the cap or lick the cap, you know, I thought it was one of those Mississippian.
It probably is, probably is. Probably being in a stupor or something.
Okay.
I didn't want to lick the cap over on this one, so we threw everything we could at it.
Okay. Council, any other further discussion on this item? If not, I entertain a motion for item 13 as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember, I'm going to go ahead and give it to Councilmember Haney, if you don't mind, Mr. Thompson. I have a second by Councilmember Haney, all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same sign, motion passed unanimously. Thank you for this work on this very important topic of ordinance, and two, once again, thank you for that, it's encouraging to see those numbers going down, even by one, it's encouraging, it's going in the right direction. Resolutions, we're going to move on to item 14, consider authorizing city manager to assign the artwork agreement for Walker Design Studio LLC art piece, UTPB. Mr. Beckmeyer.
Okay, this is kind of the gift that keeps giving. So basically what this is, is we will assign the contract and the artwork to Odessa Arts, who then will assign it to UTPB. Will get paid by Odessa Arts for the forty thousand that we've already paid. What they do from there on is really not our business, but Mr. Walker should be made own by Odessa Arts through UTPB, or by UTPB through Odessa Arts.
Okay. Council, any discussion on this item? Now entertain a motion for item fourteen is presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Cornell.
Yes.
All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, uh, all those opposing indicating by the same sign. Motion passing and answered. We're gonna move on to item fifteen, consider entering a contract with Reader Distributions to purchase fuel. Mr. Adams?
Now I have to say, for six months, I've been waiting on this to happen.
I was passing by the, 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 uh, fire station, I was, started looking for those containers.
Like you said, in August, I brought this to y'all's attention and started the process. We're finally rounding third, I believe, and coming in. So this is a resolution to, uh, give the city manager permission to enter into the agreement with, uh, Reader Distributions to provide our fuel and install our fuel tanks. Our auto pocket cost will be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, and that is just for the installation. And then everything else is provided by them. Our fuel for the first two years will be the Opus price plus forty cents a gallon. And then, uh, after that, into perpetuity, the, uh, price would be Opus plus twenty-five cents per gallon. Uh, first year savings will be approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The remaining years that the agreement is in, in effect without, you know, any unforeseen very high spikes in fuel cost or anything will be a little under a million dollars a year.
That is awesome.
Awesome.
That is incredible. Thank you. And it'll make it easier for the big old fire trucks and equipment.
Very true.
So, Chris, one question, the one sixty-five includes, we're building the fence around it, right? Around each of it?
The only one that we'll have to build a fence around would be, uh, behind the station on East Ridge. Everything else is behind a fence.
Okay, just making sure. I know we talked about that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Council, any further discussion on this item?
Chris, that'll give us six locations, tank locations, huh?
Uh, there's, yes, there'll be a tank at my, uh, eight oh one Pool Road. There'll be one at Solid Waste, be one at Fire Station on Sixteenth, one at Eighteenth.
Excellent.
Uh, or East Ridge and Eighty-seventh.
Excellent.
And when do we get our pins?
You won't have a pin, you'll just have a fob.
When do we get our fobs?
Any further discussion? Now entertain a motion for item fifteen is presented. So move. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez for approval to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by the same sign. Motion passing and answered. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for all that work, Chris. We're gonna move on to item sixteen, consider a resolution of support for demolition and reconstruction of Woodcrest Apartments located on twenty-five fifty West Eighth Street. Ms. Christina Burns?
Yes, good evening. Rise Residential previously worked with City of Odessa's staff to obtain funding for the demolition and reconstruction of the Woodcrest Apartments located at twenty-five fifty West, West Eighth Street. Um, and this property serves special needs populations, including seniors, uh, the disabled, and families at risk of homelessness. And rental assistance has, rental assistance has been provided by HUD. Um, this reconstruction will allow for HUD to continue to provide rental assistance for an additional twenty years. Um, and the project has already received financial support from federal and state agencies. The City of Odessa has previously provided two resolutions of support, as well as two letters, um, from the city manager's office. However, due to recent revisions in state law for funding, they have requested a third resolution of support. So this is what I'm presenting to you today, and we do have Bill Fisher here, representative, who is available for any questions.
Council, do we have any questions for the representative?
I just have a question, just, um, since we've done two letters of support, this will be our third, when is this actually gonna happen? I mean, I, it seems like we've been doing this for a while, so. It was our first year on council, so.
Three years ago.
That's right.
Yes, right.
Thank you, I'm Bill Fisher, here for Rise Residential. Very good question, this has been a three-year journey that we would not have gotten without your support. So we've been awarded sixteen million dollars in tax returns from TDHCA, an additional four and a half million dollars of Home American Recovery Plan Act funds, and HUD takes a long process to get to this point, environmental clearance, and we're trying to close in July, which would start construction here in the fall.
Perfect, thank you. That was, I was just curious, I'm sure other people were curious.
Absolutely. Sooner the better.
Third's the charm.
Thank you.
That's a good question. Any other questions or discussion?
I was gonna ask on Woodcrest, do you, how many units is in Woodcrest? And do we know in the rebuild, how many units that we're, we can, same then?
Yeah, the, the program rules, we would frankly like to have added some units, it's a nine-acre site, but the, under the rules, um, at both the state and HUD for the funding that's already in place, eighty, we couldn't do more than eighty or less than eighty.
Is someone living there now?
Absolutely, we have fifty-four families living there now.
They're all being relocated.
They are, at our expense, temporarily.
Then they'll come back.
That's right.
Yeah, so these are all being brand new, updated and fixtures and...
Well, the, ninety-nine percent of these developments are simply rehabilitated.
Yeah.
This is a revitalization area for the city, and frankly, the money's better spent giving everyone something new. And it's something that really the, the, it's never really, really been done in this region before. And, uh, we think it's the smart way to do it. Um, the property was built originally in nineteen sixty-five.
These are in District Five, right there in that intersection with the elementary's at.
We have Walker, absolutely.
Yeah.
And there's been a lot of new development up there, there's a new, uh, Walgreens, and of course, the Walmart, just, uh, up the highway and...
Right there on Eighth, when you pass, yeah. Harvest, yes.
Yeah, so this is designed to make life better for the, the families that will live with us for the next, you know, forty years. But honestly, it's better for the neighborhood, and we had a lot of neighborhood support because of that, but let's be honest, it's a better use of the money.
Yeah, that is, that is, that is a revitalization area going on right now in that area.
And planning's been involved, I think our plans are basically approved, and we'll, we'll do you proud.
That is awesome.
Thank you.
Glad to come to fruition.
Thank you.
All right, any other further discussion on this item? If not, I'll have, uh, entertain a motion for item fifteen, uh, sixteen is presented.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by saying, same sign. Motion passing and answered. We're gonna move on to item seventeen, consider approving downtown infrastructure and facade grant agreement for Advanced Wireless Communications LLC. Ms. Burns?
Yes, so Advanced Wireless Communications is requesting, uh, downtown infrastructure and facade grants for, um, improvements that they would like to make at four thirteen East Eighth Street. Um, their current, or they qualify for up to seventy-eight thousand fifty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents for the infrastructure improvements, and twenty-five thousand for the facade grant improvements, and this will be leased space.
So this, this is our first project in the extended area, I would assume?
This is actually still tier one.
Is it still tier one?
Yes, yeah, it's within Ninth Street.
Okay. Do we have any, uh, discussion, comments? Now entertain a motion for, uh, item seventeen is presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swanner, second by Councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same sign. Motion passing and answered. We'll move on to item eighteen, consider approval of professional service agreement with Newton Engineering PC to provide design services for the reconstruction of the Dixie Boulevard, Forty-sixth Street, Walnut Avenue. Mr. Tucker?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
February thirteenth, this council awarded, uh, some money for, from the ARPA funds to rebuild Dixie. Since that time, we've gone out, taken another look at it, developed a scope of what all needs done. Uh, worked with a consultant, selected Newton Engineering, and they've proposed to do that work for us. What this item is, is to approve the professional engineering services agreement with them so that we can, uh, get this under design and move forward with the reconstruction.
Okay. Council, any discussion on this item?
What's the...
Timeline.
Yeah, that's what it, I was curious what it was costing.
It's, uh, the fee for the services is seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, I couldn't remember, sorry, Jeff.
No, that's quite all right.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that being in the district that I represent, I'll wait to make the motion that we move forward on this matter. We have a motion on item eighteen by Councilmember Vasquez for approval of item eighteen to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same, same, same sign. Motion passing and answered. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to miscellaneous, item nineteen, consider approval of the city manager's recommendation for keep Odessa beautiful face upon the results of the task force review. Mr. Bigmire?
Okay, each one of you got possibly the task force review. And basically, what our recommendation will be is following line, would be recommendation made by the assistant city manager two weeks ago, when she went through the org chart, and it's on, the paper lay on top of that. So in keeping with recommendations by the assistant city manager presentation, on three twenty-six point four, KOB will function as division of Solid Waste. They call us the coordination of several KOB events, such as community cleanups, which we just have very successful in these, thank you to our department and others that participated. Recycling challenges requires, this all requires seamless communication between KOB and Solid Waste. KOB is also responsible for household hazardous waste service, which is housed at the Solid Waste time machines for recycling. This change will allow the department to focus on proactive approach to community concerns, such as recycling, bulk item pickups, in areas that need special attention through education and education initiatives. And will, this also will streamline complementing services by coordinating routine pickup schedules and special events more efficiently, resulting in cost savings. The nonprofit, we haven't contemplated it that much, but it won't have that much of a purpose anymore. We'll have to see what we wind down, if we, if we need it or not over time. But we are getting more and more, uh, requests to, to clean up Odessa, and we need to.
We need to.
Uh, we have private citizens, we have one coming in this weekend with a big group, they're doing a cleanup. We did a citywide cleanup here with the four last, we had other private citizens with for that. This all helps facilitate that. Uh, you remember a while back, we authorized code enforcement to go out and mow lawns, because they had a chunk of money. This could very well be part of their job here, is getting these lots cleaned up, making sure things work good. You know, we can, we can, uh, get on the two-week, two-week schedule picking up trash, but we still have trash going around, getting hung up. We haven't done a whole, what we've done a lot, but we haven't done everything we need to do. This is just an address request.
Good, sounds good. Any other questions, Council?
One, one more thing. The task force has been just work forces, going through the Jolla for basically these. When you have a chance, look at the one that we gave you a couple of weeks ago. They're really digging into this, and making good recommendations, uh, and they've got other jobs besides working on this task force. To that sense, maybe drive through this one, I think I fell asleep last night. They're knocking it out.
Yeah, good, good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, really appreciate that, and it, uh, is one of the things that we want, we were set out to wind up doing this internal audit, and it's been, it's been, it's been fruitful. Council, any other, uh, discussion, comments? Now entertain a motion on, uh, last one, please.
So move.
On eighteen, nineteen, nineteen. Uh, we have a, a motion by Councilmember Cornell to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, uh, indicating by the same sign. Motion passing and answered. We're gonna move on to item, uh, twenty, consider approving an updated deployment agreement with the city manager, city attorney, and city secretary. Uh, who want to take this, uh, discussion on?
Well...
Well, I'll open it up to the dais, and we have council, and we want to take up this discussion. Anybody have?
I think they've done a good job.
I mean, I can.
I'm sorry?
You wanna, wanna know the truth, I think they've done a really good job. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreements to keeping this going.
What, what updates are we talking about, I mean?
Well, so, six, six, six months ago, we wind up, uh, uh, deferring, uh, from last October, deferring, we were going to review our appointees. Um, appointees asked me about placing this on the item, uh, I said, go ahead and put it on for, uh, for today to have this discussion. Do we have a, we have a list of the recommended, uh, update for salary structure? Do we have anything? Do we have anything on, on our packet?
Uh, there should be.
That's what, that's what, that's what I'm, I'm getting to right now, that's what I'm asking.
I wrote them down in my well-handied notes here.
I gotta hurry.
So do you want, do we wanna discuss each contract separately, or are we trying to do this as a whole? My personal opinion is we need to go one by one, so everybody's clear.
Okay.
Um, is a suggestion only? So we have the city attorney here, Dan, I believe he's, well, actually starting on your second year. And we, to my knowledge, we haven't evaluated you or done anything.
You're in year two?
Starting on year two, yeah, but I had the evaluation in October, and I didn't get the COA.
Okay, go ahead, Dana, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, so we're just evaluating, uh, Dan, and I've, I've looked at the contract. He's currently at one ninety, this contract brings him to two fifteen, and I think that's in line with, um, no increases since he's been hired as our appointee.
Okay. Council, any discussion on this?
This being my first role here with this area, uh, is this something that, uh, we should've been discussing in executive session, or...
Normally, we discuss it in executive session, and however, these appointees were okay with us doing it on the dais, so here we are.
We have nothing on.
So you told me going on Dan, one ninety to two fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's it, and that's what the contract states.
Okay, I remember that.
So if we need a motion, I'll make a motion.
You make a motion from, uh, one ninety to two fifteen for, uh, city attorney?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Contract as a print.
So we have a motion, uh, and a second for city attorney for one ninety to two fifteen. Any discussion?
I think Dan deserves it, this is a first.
All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by the same sign. Motion passing and answered.
Council, thank you, and that's the best two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars you'll ever spend. Yeah, my rider, right.
You know, right.
You notice he said that after the vote.
Thank you, thank you.
We might have to go lick that calf over.
Lord, don't lick the calf over, leave the calf alone, he's good. No, thank all of you, seriously, I do appreciate that, and I am humbled.
I'd want a ninety-day probationary period to see if he earns that extra.
Okay. Okay? Okay, so, um...
So the next one, I believe, is, um, Mr. Bigmire.
Mm-hmm.
He's going on his year, we did not do an evaluation on him, ninety days or six months. He is currently at two thirty-seven. We would like to bring him to two fifty. Uh, that was, we gave everyone a four percent increase, and I believe this is barely even at five percent. That was, we gave everyone a four percent increase, and I believe this is barely even at five percent.
Counsel, any discussion? Comments? Entertaining motion?
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swaner, second by Councilmember Thompson. All those in favor indicating but saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing and announced. We're gonna move on to city secretary.
So I will, I will continue. And I want to make it clear that Norma has done a wonderful job and continues to do a wonderful job. Uh, her and I had a conversation right before this meeting, and she would like to stay at her, her present salary and not take the increase to one fifty, because we gave her an increase in October. However, the contract would still apply.
Good with that?
Okay.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion? Well, we don't have to take any action.
No.
Well, we do have to take off.
Oh, for the contract.
For the contract.
Counsel, any discussion on this? If not, I will entertain a motion for city secretary's, uh, salary to stay at current level and initiate a contract. That's so move. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Council, uh, Councilmember Haney. All those in favor indicating but saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating the same sign. Motion passing and announced. We're gonna move on to item twenty-one, appointment of boards. Minister, city secretary, Agala?
Yes, Mayor, counsel, my microphone finally works after all these months. Okay, so for the board appointments, skipping down to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have a application for a alternate. That would be Melissa Prieto, who is here in the audience, and is recommended by Councilmember Cornell.
Did, did it say alternate?
Alternate.
I think you made the main member.
I'm sorry?
Not an alternate, but.
You want the full member?
Yes, ma'am.
To represent District Four?
He went to the, the filmmaking. Didn't we appoint somebody last time?
Well, we had, we had the one individual, Jesus, but then he, he fell out because of the subqualifications. And so it went into, yeah.
Okay. Yes, I remember, I was getting my boards confused, yes.
Melissa, uh, Prieto with Thrive Morgan, would you stand just for a second to be recognized? Thank you for stepping up for this.
Well, let, let's wear an end before she leaves. Before she changes her mind and realizes what she's getting into, right?
Melissa, you're good with main member, correct? A main member.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So move.
We, we need to know.
That's it.
That's it? Okay, so we have a mo, uh, entertain a motion for planning and zoning, Melissa Prieto, for the vacant, so I don't plan and zoning commission. I have a motion by Councilmember.
So move.
Cornell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating but saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating the same sign. Okay, that's it. Seeing there is no more, uh, business before this city council, I have a, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn by Councilmember.
So moved.
Swaner, second by Councilmember.
Second.
Vasquez, all in favor indicating but saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating the same sign.